Salute to the flag. Mr. Stevens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, and our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. School Committee members and student reports, school committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee, Mr. Stevens.
Nothing at this time.
All right. School building needs, that would be you again.
Yeah, nothing unless Mr. Shalapu wants to give us any information. Nope, we haven't had meetings.
Yeah, nothing new to report, Mr. Stevens. We're still working with the MSBA projects at Bolt Cell Street and for the new Crocker project.
Great. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Policy Committee.
Nothing at this time.
None, thank you. Any questions, comments from the committee? Seeing none. Student support, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
We'll be meeting again this week. The agenda's been posted, mostly checking in on engagement and plans as best we can understand them for the fall.
Okay, great. Personnel Subcommittee, that would be me, and there's nothing to report at this time. Executive Committee, again, nothing. New student, student reporter, who do we have tonight? Do we have any, Michelle or Kayden? They are not here, okay?
They are here, one second.
Nathan, was it a technical, technical difficulty or what? Malfunction?
Yeah, one second.
There she is.
Hello again, this is Kayden Scopoletti reporting the student perspective from Week Seven of online learning. During the week, students in grades nine, 10, and 11 will receive emails from teachers with a brief update of quarter four progress. The emails will explain how a student is progressing, including whether they are likely to not only receive the credit but also improve their final average, maintain their final average, or potentially receive a no credit and possibly lose partial credit for the course. The purpose is to provide an update, much like our progress reports, and also give every student the opportunity to know what they can do, how they can do it, and with whom they can communicate if they still need assistance. Seniors are well on their way to their last day of remote learning classes on Friday, May 22nd. Communicating a plan to return Chromebooks, textbooks, and other materials, picking up caps and gowns, and other items in preparation for the graduation ceremony, and any other potential virtual activities will be in progress soon. There will be a Student Advisory Council meeting on Monday at 3:00 p.m. Topics of interest include addressing remote learning and revealing what is working well, what is difficult, and what the school can do to improve it. The FPS is additionally surveying all students in grades one through 12 to get a sense of how remote learning is actively progressing. There are important questions like whether individuals have masks, how many hours a week someone might be working, the effectiveness or ineffectiveness of remote learning, and other questions as well. Personally, I've found remote learning to be quite manageable. My teachers are very easy to get in touch with at a time like this, and they are extremely flexible regarding the due dates of assignments. I typically work around two hours a day, and that work can consist of watching review videos on the College Board and submitting notes on it, finishing up my final papers, answering mock exam prompts, or attending Zoom meetings for an hour at a time or anything in between, really. I've also started working at my job again, but I only have night shifts right now, so in order to keep my day free for finishing work and attending all these Zoom calls. I would say that my stress level is the same as it was when I was in school, although the stress lies in different areas. I'm dealing with the same amount of work right now, but it's harder to get help clarifying simple questions rather than just simply raising my hand and receiving a direct answer right away. Personally, I have had a little more trouble staying focused, as I think everybody has, but I find myself most engaged when I'm actually on the Zoom calls with my teacher as they ask questions to engage their students throughout the call, similar to what you would see in a classroom setting on a normal day. This week continues AP Exams week. Due to this, my weekly workload from my core classes is little to none, as my teachers are allowing endless time for us to study and prepare for these exams. I took my AP Physics exam last Thursday, and I have three more this week. I have found that the most challenging part lies within the strict time limit and praying that my Chromebook will load and cooperate. Good luck to all students taking the exams. A huge congratulations to all the class of 2020 seniors, and I hope everyone continues to remain safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayden.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment.
Please.
Kayden Scopoletti, I have a message for you from my daughter, Jett. Kayden is a wonderful actor. She was in Anne of Green Gables last summer or last spring at Stratton Players, and Jett says she misses you. There you go.
Great. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none. Approval of minutes of the regular school committee meeting of May 18th, 20?
Make a motion, we approve May 18th meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Executive session, I don't believe there's a need for executive session, Mr. Superintendent, correct?
Correct. There's no need for executive sessions.
Communications, anyone wishing to avail themselves of the communications? Agenda item? Seeing none, public comment, if there's anyone wishing to make a public comment. Have we still kept that at five minutes, or is it, did we break it down to three?
Still at five.
It's still five. Anyone wishing? Is there anyone on? Seeing none. Superintendent's report, Mr. Jokel.
Good evening, School Committee. Before we get started tonight, I have one request that, in the sequence of the superintendent's report, if we have Carrie Purcell of Focus Schools go first. But before we start with the Focus Schools presentation, I just want to give the community an update of where we've been over the last two months and where we are and where we're going, or at least what we know of where we're going. So, first of all, we've been in this remote learning environment now for eight weeks as a result of the pandemic. There have been some things that have been positive in terms of our learning and teaching. Number one, we have the highest level of teacher collaboration probably in our history. The parental outreach has also been at a high level, and our teachers have swiftly adopted the use of technology tools, primarily the Google Meets platform that we use as a district. While those have been positives, positive results of the pandemic, or as we've instituted remote learning, we are still working on engaging students and engaging parents. To that end, as Kayden mentioned, we are surveying both students and parents right now. To clarify, the student survey is for students in grades five through 12, not one through 12. We have begun receiving the survey results. Adam Renda may mention, just give an update in terms of how many we've received so far here. But again, the engagement is the focus that we have for the remainder of this year, over the remaining five weeks. And we want to have a deeper engagement, more authentic engagement with the students and the parents, because with five weeks left at this point, the guidance for the state on reopening has been very limited. The state is one of the top five states with rates of coronavirus infections, and we look forward to receiving more concrete guidance from DESI in terms of how we will reopen. What I can say with a high degree of certainty from all the Zoom calls I've participated with the Commissioner on is that remote learning will be continuing in the fall in one way, shape, or form. At this time, we don't know if we'll be opening school with remote learning, or if we'll have some type of hybrid model where students attend school on either certain days of the week or alternate by weeks. We're investigating some of the comment literature from the public health experts, including the CDC, on how to keep staff and students safe in terms of social distancing. This may have an impact in terms of how many students are in a classroom, a cafeteria, how many students can ride a bus. At this point in time, we have received nothing formal from DESI and Fitchburg, and I think every other community across the Commonwealth is waiting for additional guidance. As soon as that guidance is received, we will share with you. So that's where we're at with what we know. Right now, there's really more that we don't know yet, and the Governor, again, on a weekly and daily basis, has begun the process of reopening the Commonwealth, and we look forward to the announcement where there's more guidance on schools. And my closing comment before we get to the remainder of the agenda items is that the normal that we are, we were used to probably will not exist when we return in August or September in terms of the scheduling and the freedoms that we were all accustomed to. So I look forward to working with all participants, the community, parents, students, teachers, and the school committee to make the transition and return back to school as smooth as possible. So, having said that, Mr. Mayor, if we can go out of schedule and move Focus Schools' presentation from Carrie Purcell to the top of the agenda, and just as a quick introduction, Carrie Purcell is a senior executive with Focus Schools. She has been working with Focus Schools during school turnarounds across the country for the last 12 years. She has worked in several districts in Massachusetts to whom we have spoken with members, where clients who she is currently engaged in and also past clients. And with the results that she was able to achieve, I come before the school committee tonight seeking your blessing on proceeding with the retention of Focus Schools as a supplement to the efforts of the District Principal Roach at Fitchburg High School and Principal Mark Pierce over at McKay. So, without further ado, Carrie, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you for the warm introduction, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the entire school committee for having me be able to join you this evening. So I'm going to try sharing my screen here, and then I will make the PowerPoint full size so that you can see that. It's, here we go. Let me make it large. And then we will be ready to go. Here we go. All right. Can everyone see that okay? Yes, perfect. All righty. Well, Superintendent Jokel said I had 2.5 hours tonight to share the story with you. Is that about right?
How many minutes?
2.5 hours.
Hours?
Just kidding.
Don't do that to the mayor.
Don't do that to the mayor. All righty, all righty, well, okay.
Yeah, you know, has he told you how I love long presentations?
How about less than 10 minutes? That seem fair enough?
That's better.
So, yeah.
Much better, thank you.
I'm really, really delighted to be here. I'm coming to you from Florida where it's raining right now, but I spend probably 50% of my school year in Massachusetts. In fact, when I left the principalship over two, over a dozen years ago, Worcester, Massachusetts was my first job and with Focus Schools, and I have been doing this work in Massachusetts ever since. I serve a lot of districts in Massachusetts right now, but also spend some time in California and Virginia. And my background is really as a turnaround principal. I started out as a teacher. I taught everything from elementary school to special education. I was an assistant principal, and then my superintendent asked me to go to Harvard Park Elementary School in Illinois to turn that school around, and it was during my time as a principal that I first became acquainted with, at that time, the company was called Focus on Results, and because of the framework that they were able to help me understand, I was able to work smarter, not harder, alongside of my teachers to positively impact student achievement. So I'm coming to you tonight to tell you a little bit about what we do and what we're planning on doing, and I'm going to go right through these slides here and start here because Mr. Mayor doesn't like 2.5-hour presentations, so we're just going to get to the gist of it. So my job and what we believe is that when we drive into the parking lot to join as a partner with the district, it's our moral imperative, our promise to you, that we're going to work to the leadership capacity in all of the staff members that we are privileged to work with. And we're going to do that by helping them focus on teaching and learning, because we believe that when the adults do that, students are able to reach their full potential, and not just a few students, but every student. And so as soon as I partner with you, my job is simply going to be to work myself out of a job. And how do we do that? We have this common framework, and I just want to be perfectly clear. What we do is not in shrink wrap, but it's a framework to help folks think differently about how they use their time, talent, resources, money, stuff, people, to achieve the goal of meeting the needs of every student. And so we work on these seven things as partners in districts. I'm going to go through these just very briefly. Number one, we look at data to help schools identify an instructional focus. In other words, what the data says that if we do this better than anything else that we do for students, they're going to show growth. Once schools identify that instructional focus, we work to deepen what they're doing with professional collaboration teams, where they're focusing nearly 100% of their time on topics related to teaching and learning. Number three, we help them have a look at what they're already doing, and I have to tell you, both the high school and McKay are already doing a really good job of looking at what does the research say in regards to best instructional practices? In other words, the tools that we want to give to our students so that they can achieve, in other words, reach their full potential. So both McKay and the high school have worked to identify some of those practices, and they've asked me the question, are we going to have to stop doing that and do something different? And the answer is no, so long as we're moving the needle on student achievement, because that's the goal. Number four, we help schools to begin to say no thank you to professional development that's not connected to their focus and build a plan where they keep the main thing, the main thing, for a period of time, because if, we believe, teachers drive into the parking lot to do right by kids, and it's our job to give them the tools that they need to work smarter. And so by creating this job embedded professional development plan, it helps them to do just that. Number five and six, I'm going to be completely honest, we don't spend a lot of time with that on, in year one, because we're trying to get one through four and number seven in place. It's not that we don't talk about it, it's not, it's, it's really that we don't expect five and six to be done with fidelity year one, because number seven is really the heart of the work, and it's about creating an internal accountability system where every four to six weeks, we celebrate the growth that our students are making, and we ask ourselves three questions. What's working? What's not working? And what are we going to do about both? Our partnerships typically last between one and five years. The district works with us to say, okay, we've achieved what we need to achieve, you're fired now, and we take, you know, we take our things and we go, and we're there to support as needed, even after we're gone. But I say, you know, this timeframe, because the framework doesn't change over time, right? It's not like then year two, we throw this out and we try something different. That's what's happened in education for a long time, and that's why people aren't able to take hold of anything, they're not able to root something in the work that they do every day. So we stay with this framework, but we just go deeper. So why do we do this? Because we believe it's about impact. We believe that our moral imperative is to empower your team, your people that we will become a part of, they'll be like our family and we'll be like their family, to think about impact, and not just for those students, not just for some students, not just for six students, but for every student, no exception. And so in Fitchburg, we're going to offer a three, sort of this three-pronged approach. We're going to look at how can the district further align the work that they're doing to support the schools, McKay and the high schools, as well as the other schools? How are we going to make sure all the arrows of the improvement work are going in the right direction so that schools aren't bumping into initiatives that don't make sense, but rather those initiatives are sort of coming from the bottom up to give schools support? We're also going to work with the principals and their admin team, building capacity for these folks to become instructional leaders, to spend at least 50% of their instruct, or their day being in classrooms, providing feedback, sitting in on PLCs, becoming a participant of instructional leadership team, all of those pieces that administrators want to do, but also often struggle to figure out how to make that happen. And finally, we know, and I remember well, a principal can't do the job by themselves. So you have these great instructional leadership teams in place, we're going to work with that instructional leadership team to empower them to come alongside the principal and assistant principals to lead this really important work. All right, so how are we going to do that? We're going to have sort of all of these parts moving at the same time to get to this place at the end of the arrow called action. We aren't about words on a paper, we're not about fancy PowerPoints, we're not about these complicated data charts. We're about working smarter, creating plans that lead to action, and those, that action leads to results. So if we look at the beginning of the arrow on the left-hand side, we're going to do that by providing professional development, onsite professional development with the instructional leadership team and the principal and their admin team to go through this framework, giving them tools and resources that they need to be successful in the implementation of that framework. We're going to collaborate, we roll up our sleeves, we work right alongside the principal and his or her leadership team to make this professional development turn into that navy blue, action. We do that by offering coaching in between the professional development, because as leaders, I went to many, an amazing professional development session, and I went back to my school and did the same thing. Why? Because nobody was there to hold me accountable. It wasn't until Focus on Results, then was the company's name, came alongside of me, and my coach Joe said, oh, but remembering the training, you said you were going to do these three things, why haven't you done those yet? Oh, yeah. So it's there to provide that pressure and support to make principals be and feel successful. And then last but not least, as I mentioned before, every four to six weeks, we're going to monitor and adjust. Is this working? Is it not working? What are we going to do about both? And the data that we use are learning visit, pieces of learning visit data, or whatever assessments are already in place in the district. Whenever we get MCAS up and running, we'll be using that, so all kinds of data to celebrate the progress that schools are making. So I just wanted to show you, and you may not be able to see it very clearly, but this is an example of how the data has moved, and I'm not going to get into the granular, I can send you this PowerPoint, you can look at it closer, but this is Congdon Elementary School located in New Bedford. They have just received, well, for the last two years, they received a commendation from DESI for the progress that they've made, particularly in closing the achievement gap with their L students. So we are really proud of the work that they've done, and it wasn't really because of anything we did, it was because they allowed us to partner with them to work with the principal to move the needle on student achievement. And then this is a large urban district in Virginia, Norfolk. I just wanted to show you that we, when we were working with 57 of their, all of their schools, 57 schools, we were able to get them from 39% of those schools accredited to 61% in a period of two years. So I believe that data doesn't lie, and as Superintendent Jokel has said, you know, my job is to help you get better at what you're doing, and you're going to hold me accountable by looking at that data. So I'm going to open it up for questions, but you can also take a picture of this, I'm going to send you the PowerPoint in case you have questions later on down the road. But anything that didn't make sense, did I talk too fast around one part that you want to ask me a clarifying question, I'm just going to be quiet and open the floor up to you, to you all, and I'll do my best to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Purcell, that was terrific. Members of the committee, any questions for Ms. Purcell?
I have a question.
Yes?
Hi. Hi there. I, I, I'm really excited about this, and I'm very much in support of the coaching model. What I would love to see, if you have it as data or, you know, text, would be comments from teachers directly engaged, you know, in this. And since McKay is a, you know, a K to eight, and the Fitchburg High School takes us from nine to 12, you know, any, any, any grade age would be very welcome, but especially middle school, because we have, like I'm sure you've found in many, many districts, you know, middle school is when the parental involvement really drops off, and when there's just so much going on in terms of developmental stuff with kids, that, I mean, our middle school teachers are troopers and, you know, moms and dads who are very in loco parentis at the same time, but I would love to see what you have. So I'm just asking, do you have data, text from teachers and admins that you have worked with directly?
Oh, yes.
Where, speaking of the experience?
Oh, yes, absolutely. And I'll send you middle school, but I'll also send some from elementary and high school so you can see the, you know, sort of the gamut. We collect data at the end of every one of our professional development sessions and also collect data after our coaching sessions about how did this go, what can we do better? So I have that, and I could send it through the superintendent, I'm assuming, Sally?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, perfect. I'll get that done tomorrow. Does that sound okay?
Beautiful, thank you so much.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
Carrie, I have a question, this is Jean.
Yes, ma'am.
I have two questions, actually. So the first one is, given that we're likely going into a very different, well, like we are right now, different environment in the fall, how do you see the time that you could spend in this district having sort of the payoff that you think? And then, secondly, especially in that we don't even really know where MCAS is, right? We don't have MCAS data this year as well. But then the other question, so that's one, and the other question is, you said that your goal is to get administrators in the classroom 50% of their time, and I guess I just want to know how that happens when you have discipline, and maybe the administrators want to talk about this, but are we looking at, are you looking at putting other people in charge of discipline issues in the school, or what's the, how does that happen?
Sure, sure. So those are two great questions, Jean, and if you don't mind, I'll start with the first one, and then we'll move on. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
All right. So in terms of remote learning and the situation that the country is in right now, we have moved to a digital platform, because of course, all schools are closed right now. So we can provide training and coaching virtually, and we will do that, and we will be as successful as that, with that, for as long as we have to be. However, as soon as permission is granted, I will be there, because I believe that, I believe in walking classrooms with the principal, right? I believe in sitting at the same table with the leaders and rolling up our sleeves and doing the work. So as soon as- So as soon as we are able, I'm headed that way. And until then, we will make remote learning and remote professional development and coaching work. I will admit, you know, I'm old. So when, when this first happened, remote learning and remote PD and coaching, I was nervous, like, well, how's this going to work? But it does. We adapt and we, 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 we just make it work. So I know that's not a definitive answer, but as soon as permission is granted, I'm on my way. And so then to your latter question regarding principal being in classrooms, serving as an instructional leader a minimum of 50% of the time? It is a process, right? And if you recall, one of the things I said was, this is, this whole, this, this whole work is about empowering other people. So I'm going to work alongside of the principal to empower folks to come alongside him. In this case, they're both, they're both males, so I can say that. To do some of those things that we think only the principal can do. And I will be the first to admit, I thought I had to do everything as a principal. Come to find out, if the right systems and structures are in place, some of the discipline takes care of itself, right? And there are other ways and mechanisms to make that happen. So I will, very early on, set a goal with the principals. What percentage of time do you think you're in classrooms right now? Now let's set a reasonable but rigorous goal to move up a little bit. 5%, 2%, right? And we'll just keep growing that until we get to that 50%. It's not something that's going to happen like that. It's something that's going to take time. And I think you had a question about the MCAS, but if you could remind me how you wanted me to respond, I've lost that train of thought.
Well, I guess it's just in the metrics of measuring the impact that you're having, right? Like we.
Yes.
I just feel like we're, I mean, I'm, I'm, MCAS has always been a thorny issue to me anyway as a measurement of what we do for kids. I get that it is our beta. It's what we have to live with. But I just think we're going to enter now another year where that measurement, how do you trust that measurement, right? Like, I mean, talking about kids who really are not getting deep instruction. And I, I just, I don't, I don't know. I like, I guess I'm just kind of wondering how it's going to work in a year where it's going to be very different.
So Jean, that's a really good question. And we always look at whatever the state test is called, MCAS or whatever it is, is as a summative. In other words, at that point, it's too late to go back and undo that calendar year, right? Because you don't get the results back until fall. So we work right away, once the instructional focus has been identified, to help the schools craft a smart E goal. Specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, timely, and for every single student. And that smart E goal then is measured every four to six weeks so that teachers can take quarter turns in response to the data. And we look at a whole plethora of assessments that they can use, from student work to whatever they're using as their internal assessment at this point in time. STAR, IREDDY, does it matter? You know, end of unit assessments. But we're going to look at those every four to six weeks. We're going to promise to grow 100% of our students and we're going to see how we're doing every four to six weeks. And so that's one way to hold ourselves accountable and to hold me accountable, whether or not MCAS is there or not. Is that your question?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, alright.
I have something to ask.
Yes, Rosemary.
From listening to you, I'm getting the impression that you're suggesting that the principals and, and are you speaking only of the two schools directly? Or all schools in, in Pittsburgh? That that's in the parenthesis, that they become? See, I'm accustomed to principals walking the schools, walking into a classroom, walking out. It's wonderful if it's a wonderful class and, you know, if it, if it isn't, you wish it were. But I think what you're suggesting is more that they're part of the teacher's team. That this, a broader shared growth, rather than just like a teacher examination with the principal showing up. Am I making myself clear?
Yes, Rosemary, you are. So I did, as a principal, I'm going to tell you all my mistakes I made as a principal here before we finish. But I did what you were describing, Rosemary, as a principal. And, and my coach told me that those were hallway suites, like going in and out of the classrooms and just sort of checking in, is it going well? What we're, what we're thinking about is if I go into the classroom, that teacher deserves a conversation with me. And so that's what I'm talking about when I say principal or assistant principal is going to be spending a minimum of 50% of their time in the classroom. That includes sitting down with the teacher to say, wow, this was going really well. Kudos to you. I wonder about this. And then with that wonder, turning it into a plan, right? So we're making incremental growth with that teacher from being in the classroom and providing them growth-producing feedback.
Might, might I, just again, as I, following the, your thoughts along the way, might it not be a wonderful thing if the principal knew what the, what the teacher was teaching that or what the goals were so that he also entered in, you know, into the specific, rather than coming in cold and saying, well, that's, that's a nice class.
Yes, Rosemary, that's another really good point. And so we know that principals have to look at a lot of stuff, right? When they go into a classroom. In our work with them, we want them to spend time looking for implementation of that instructional focus. Remember that number one on the framework? Because the data said, kids need to get better at X, whatever X is going to be. So when you go in, let's give feedback just around that. And before that, hopefully, principal and teacher have set a little goal together to say, oh, I want you to come in and sort of look for this because I've been working really hard on this and will you give me feedback?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Carrie?
Yes, Peter?
I think that's a great idea with, with the, with the principals going into the classrooms. Many, the teachers are going to have on their boards or their charts what their goals and objectives are for the day. So, and principals will have a good idea of knowing what they're going in for anyway. So I, I think that's good. And part of your, kind of, part of the 50% of the time is kind of the talking after, because you can't have a conversation while they're teaching.
That's right.
So.
That's right.
And just comment, I do like, as we listened to a student, Ms. Copoletti earlier, she said when she could talk to her teacher and get answers directly.
That's right.
It's, it's the same as when you are there and you will be able to talk to the administrator directly. And, and I like that, being able to hold them to their goals and what they have said they're going to do. So it's not going for a workshop, coming home, forgetting about. It's somebody there who they can talk with, just like Ms. Copoletti said, I can talk to my teacher and clear things up. So I like it.
Oh, thank you, Peter. And you know, as humans, what we don't know, we make it up, right? And so if you're not willing to sit with somebody and give them feedback and push them and support them, you're doing them a disservice, right? So I appreciate that, that you recognize that and we're super committed to that piece.
Part of our, part of our contract, teachers, principals and administrators are in and out of the classroom a lot.
Good, outstanding, outstanding. Yeah, I really believe, and I've said this in a number of meetings that I've had thus far with Pittsburgh, that you have the foundation, right? There are so many places I go where we have to like pour the concrete and let the concrete dry and turn into a foundation before we can start building a house. You have that foundation. So you are poised, you are poised for amazing things to happen.
Glad you mentioned that, Ms. Purcell. You get Pittsburgh High School and McKay, highest graduation rate at Pittsburgh High School and the lowest dropout rate. And, and this is something that the superintendent put in, in modern times. I guess that's as opposed to medieval times. I'm not sure where, how far back we're going. But, you know, ELL students, we've increased engagement, lowest chronic absenteeism in recent times, increased distributive leadership. That's at the high school, McKay, decrease in chronic absenteeism from 23% to 15%. So you're right, you've got quite the foundation there. And, you know, if it wasn't for COVID-19.
Right.
I think we'd be in a much different place right now.
That's right, that's right.
Because of those achievements and accomplishments. So it's certainly a credit to, to all involved.
Yes, and, and it's a credit to the school committee for hiring well. Great teachers are, are the ticket for students, but behind every great teacher must be a great principal. And you have two principals who are learners, they're reflective, they're data-driven, and they're willing to do whatever it takes for kids. And that is not typical across the country. So kudos to you all.
Can I ask another question? I don't, I can't see everybody, so I don't know if I'm jumping in, so I'm sorry. But I wonder if it would be possible, and maybe we're going to hear Superintendent Jokala from the principals because they're here. But we, you know, from sitting on the school committee for a few years now, like there's been groups like DSAC and there have been all these coaching models that have kind of come through. And I guess I'm curious, what, what would make this, what makes this different? And what does it bring to your toolbox or whatever that, that you didn't have before? Is, is, so it's really directed more to the principals, I guess?
Let me, let me start off, Jean, with that in terms of trying to clarify some of the roles here. You know, first of all, DSAC is now known as SSOS, Statewide System of Support. And we've been working with their central Western team now for the last, well, I guess the last year and a half, the four schools who were, you know, designated as accountability. And prior to that, you know, Pittsburgh High had worked with DSAC on a voluntary basis. And a couple of years ago, one of the DSAC staff members had come before the school committee with Jeremy to talk about Pittsburgh High School. So to be clear, DSAC or SSOS is an arm of DESI. And they're really available to us and to all the schools they work with for support, guidance, but not active management. While they'll, you know, introduce us the best tools and help guide us in terms of what they have seen be successful in some other districts, we're actually bringing on a firm and a person that, if I were to use the sporting analogy, can, can take us to an elite level. You know, we're, we're not content just to have our schools get out of the bottom 10%. We want to, you know, train our staff, train our staff up so that we have more of a distributive leadership model. Both Mark and Jeremy have, we've worked very hard over this year and really, as, as one of you said, built, built the foundation. And if we didn't have that foundation, we wouldn't be going forward with these two schools. You know, Carrie, one, one thing that Carrie didn't mention is that in addition to the two schools, she'll be working closely with Central Office as well. So there are almost three groups of clients that she'll be working with to make sure that we're also supporting the schools and identifying any resources necessary to, for the staff to be successful. So, you know, one of the things that we started this year in Pittsburgh, and again, Pittsburgh High and McKay are two examples, is moving more to a distributive leadership model approach, whereby maybe in the past, it was more focused on the principal. Running a school, it's complex and very busy. And it really takes a team to be successful at a school. And I think one of the things that we've seen in Pittsburgh is the schools that have had teams in place have been more, the more successful schools. So we're, we're bringing in Carrie and Focus Schools, who are proposing to bring her in to really act as a, you know, coach to the principals, coach to Central Office. As she mentioned at the beginning, she's been doing this work for 12 years. She started when she was 15, I think she said.
That's right. 14.
14, okay. But I think, you know, in, in this case, there's, there's a benefit to, to the principals and to the leadership teams of having someone who has a track record of success in urban settings, in diverse schools. And that's something that, that can only help us. So I'm, I'm happy to, you know, Mark and his staff and Jeremy and his staff have spent a little time with Carrie, you know, getting to talk to her, find out what her and Focus Schools are about and vice versa. So, you know, I'm happy to just turn the floor over to Mark or Jeremy and have them talk about, you know, the conversation so far and how it could help the, the students at their schools.
Yeah, I can, I can jump in, Jean. And it's Jeremy Roach here, Pittsburgh High. I, I think for us, what it would do is, you know, first of all, you know, our administrative team and part of our instructional leadership team had a chance to meet with, with Carrie and ask some, some important questions that we had. And, and I think in work, in, in those two different meetings that we've had, you know, we felt very comfortable with her and, and not only what, what she does, but what Focus Schools seems to be about. So right there, the fit, you know, felt right. I think in terms of what it would help with us is, and, and you know this from, from, you know, being a high school teacher yourself, I think is, there's so many different factors at, at a, at a school setting over the course of the year. And though we, we always strive to have, you know, the good practices of a school-wide SMART goal for everybody and two or three goals, and let's stick to those. You know, when we come together, oftentimes you can get pulled in different directions. And, and I think what, talking to Carrie, you know, has, has really reinforced to, to us at the high school administrative team anyway, is that she will help us stay very focused on those two to three goals or two goals or one goal, or whatever it might be. But a manageable number that everybody learns and knows and is acting on it. And I think give us, sort of help our eyesight, so to speak, in terms of seeing that in action. And again, you know, when you're, when you're, when you're within the environment of it, you know, there's relationships and there's, there's backgrounds and there's all the different things that can maybe, you know, cloud your judgment with rose-colored glasses maybe at times, because you know the people. And so I think having an outside perspective really helps because they just see what it is. And not say, hey, start to act like a jerk to that person. But let's focus on how we can help that person. And then they can help all these people and then overall, you know, and show those kinds of improvements. And, and the last thing I would say is, you know, for high schools, our goal is really, and I know it's the goal of the district and the other schools and Mark's as well at McKay, is we want to be the best urban high school in the state. We're not far from, from being able to do that. You know, the gap between us and, and the few that are there is pretty thin. And, and, you know, I thought we were well on our way to it this year. But I think with Carrie working with us next year, you know, we really feel confident that we can make that happen.
Mark, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, so I'll just add to that. So first of all, you know, when I first met Carrie, I was intrigued when she said, you know, I can get 50% of my time in classrooms. So right there, she had me, I was intrigued by, okay, if we, if you can just do that, I'm in. And also just to completely add another note, for ours, MCAS, I was probably the only one disappointed that we didn't have MCAS this year because I really felt McKay, you know, the school and the teachers worked real hard this year and we were really primed to really make big gains this year. So I was a little disappointed. I told Carrie that I am looking forward to finding her at the end of next year, after we have MCAS and make our big gains. But, you know, we still welcome her. But, you know, we still welcome her. And, you know, and my group and myself, we questioned her. And I guess the biggest thing for me is I want somebody that's gonna work beside me and not come in and not another one. Because again, I've been doing this for thirty years. Another like like Gene said, you know, we've had many organizations come in over the years, tell us what we do wrong and then leave and give you, you know, a list of things you have to do. And I think what makes Focus Schools different is we've already identified, I mean, we all know what's going on, what we're doing wrong, right? But the 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 issue's been how do we fix it and how do we close the loop? A lot of times, we're great identifying the problem, we collect data on it. And then, like Jeremy said, you get pulled in a million different directions and you never quite close the loop. So I think what, you know, Carrie can do is make sure we stay focused and and we we set out and close some of those loops that we set at the beginning of the year. I I really appreciate the coaching model and it being a math instructional coach for many years. I appreciate that as, you know, being a principal, that having a coach working beside me, I think could be ready beneficial for me going going forward. Those are the main things, but I think just working, you know, having a group that works with us and to the end and versus just coming and saying what we're doing wrong and leaving, I think I I think that alone can help us out. And then if she can get me in class fifty percent of the time, I'm for it. So I'm worth to try it. So.
Mark, it's gonna be eighty percent.
Eighty percent.
We're gonna do this.
Baby steps, baby steps.
Baby steps. That's right. That's right. Did that help, Gene?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and and I think, you know, Mark isn't really, I don't think Mark's the only principal in the district or even on the meeting tonight that is disappointed that, I mean, while it seems trivial, that, you know, Pittsburgh High wasn't able to see it's what the MCAS results would have been this year. You know, as we said, given the high highest graduation and lowest dropout rate in recent history, and the reason it's recent history is because there are some people who have disputed the, you know, what what the dropout rate was at the turn of the last century, you know, nineteen eleven or eighteen ninety-six. So that's why it's modern times. You know, but but in all seriousness, I think, you know, it's it's a credit to, I think, the principals, their teams. And I think the conversations that the teams had with Carrie were extremely honest and open, recognizing where, you know, each school or each team was at. And the the overarching goal is to, you know, help every student and help every student be successful so that we can, you know, get better every day and and become, you know, focused in on our goal of being the best urban district in the state.
Carrie, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you part, your company, is it your company? Have you worked for this company? Is it a nationwide company? Is it a state, you know, in the individual states? Just tell me something about the group.
Sure. Sure. So Focus Schools used to be focused on results, and it was founded by two principals, who actually co-principled a middle school in Long Beach, California. And we have about twenty-five people on our team. I'm now one of the partners of the of the company. We're, our business office is in San Francisco, so we do work across the entire country. And all of our consultants work remotely, so we don't have a brick and mortar building. But it's been around, used to be called Focus on Results, but it's been around for over twenty years. And we have stayed true to the framework. And the only people we will hire are principals and or district leaders who have done this work in an urban school setting. So all of our staff, minus the business office, of course, have been in Jeremy and Mark's shoes doing this work. And so that's why we think that we offer a good opportunity as a partner because we get it.
Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Other questions? All right, Superintendent Jokela, I have some deliverables. So tomorrow I'll send you some some anecdotal notes from teachers and principals. And then if, once I leave, if they ask for anything else, just let me know.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, everybody.
Good luck.
Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate it.
Evening. Bye now.
Okay, returning to the agenda for the FLAC board member. I think the school committee needs to vote.
I'm making a recommendation that for FLAC, we recommend Jokela as our representative.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Bud, thank you. You are, again, a FLAC board member. Superintendent Jokela.
Soon to be a different name.
Well, it is a different name, so we'll get to that in in two seconds here. The CAPS board member.
He, yeah.
Yeah.
Willing to serve again.
Yeah.
I second that.
All right. Mr. Stevens nominated, seconded by Mr. Walsh. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed as unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Keystone Educational Collaborative Agreement, formerly known as FLAC. So really, next year, when we do the the vote for my seat at the FLAC board, we'll have to update it to reflect Keystone. But I asked Alicia Baroski, Director of Special Education, just to join us just to provide a brief reason for the the vote for for the new agreement. So Alicia, if you're still on, unmute yourself and give me the quick update.
Sure. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Evening, Alicia.
Hi. Good to see everybody's faces or, you know, pictures anyway. So I'm just gonna quickly share my screen here. Does everybody see the Keystone Educational Collaborative?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is just their mission and vision. And really, the purpose of the the renaming and rebranding was to really recognize the communities that they are now serving. When it was called FLAC, it was based on the first letters of the towns and cities that they serviced. But now there are many more members that they support. And it was, again, the opportunity for them to recognize the cities and towns that they now serve and to unite the member districts and communities to work together and provide educational opportunities for their students. The agreement with Keystone, now Keystone, is just the standard contract that we have with them, updating, of course, the name to Keystone and highlighting some additional things that needed to be in the contract. So I'm assuming that everybody has a copy of the contract?
Yep.
Okay. So again, it there's nothing, you know, necessarily hugely different about the contract itself. It just changes the name and the and includes the mission and and vision as well as the, you know, persnickety things that the state requires in that. Was there any questions on that? And I guess just for clarification in terms of our community, FLAC, now Keystone Collaborative, services students with emotional impairments, intellectual impairments, autism. For those students who, and they work together with the school district to help support the students within the school district as well with different, you know, contractual services that we may use from them. But they really service students who are pretty intense sometimes with the the needs that they have and do a do a good job as well.
Alicia, I have a question. How many students are involved approximately?
How many students are at the FLAC Collaborative currently? I would say probably about forty. I don't have hard numbers to give you, but I think it's about forty. Yeah. So typically, we try to support our students within the community. So we we would typically go to collaborative, either CAP or FLACs to Keystone now in order to keep them involved in the community as much as possible.
I see.
We have to vote to that name change as the city of Pittsburgh.
I don't know that. I don't.
I don't think so.
Vote for it.
I think I think that what that's really, I think, just the FLAC or now Keystone Board decision.
Okay. But we will be signing a new contract with Keystone.
Yep. And 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 to be clear, all all members of the now Keystone Collaborative have been presenting this proposed agreement to their respective school committees for approval. And it just works out just by our meeting schedule and calendar that we're on the tail end of the communities who are approving this agreement.
This is Jim. If it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion to approve action item twenty dash twelve ninety-six, which deals with the name change and the other changes in the agreement for the Keystone Collaborative.
I got that.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you, Alicia. So lastly, under the superintendent's update is Disruptive Equity Education Project. And really to continue along the theme of the reason for retaining, you know, recommending the retention of Focus Schools is we want to make sure every student has an opportunity to learn and has access to her. And while Carrie will be, you know, working with the school leadership teams and with Central Office, DEEP will be looking at equity of our students, our policies and training our leadership team, starting with Cabinet, moving on to the principals as a phase two. And a phase three training would be for the school committee probably in a year or so. DEEP has been retained by some urban districts. And actually, another school located in Pittsburgh is also in the process of retaining DEEP. And that was coincidentally discovered as we're in the final stages of trying to get a proposal from this firm. DEEP has a history of working with school districts in Massachusetts, in urban districts. And there are really two components to their proposal. One is a professional development and training component. And then the other component is in regards to the equity audit, which is, you know, the lion's share from a from a financial perspective. Like Focus Schools, the work by DEEP would start with with Cabinet at the end of this school year and continue into next year. Given the diversity of our student population, our enrollment, we're now nearly seventy-one percent of our students are are students of color, fifty-two percent being Latino. We have a teacher workforce that is ninety-seven percent white. And and to be clear, you know, our demographics aren't materially different from demographics of other urban districts. And we really want to be attuned to what the needs of our students and our parents are. And we want to make sure that Pittsburgh Public Schools, all our schools and, you know, our staff or their teachers, administrators, or custodians, make sure each school and each student is a welcoming environment and they feel that they belong. And that's that's really the goal, that after a period of time, and and this will take a few years to to get there. But we feel that we need to start with a a some training at the cabinet level and also with an equity audit to help guide our work going forward. So again, both this DEEP proposal and the Focus School proposals have that constant similar theme of being there for all students. So without all, take any questions.
Bob, I know on one of the attachments that we got in the packet, we saw what the what the cost is for the Focus Schools. Do we, but I'm looking at the agenda, and what is the cost for the DEEP?
So the the DEEP, the the equity audit component is thirty-six thousand dollars. And then the coaching for Central Office is five thousand. And then the remaining professional development for other administrators and school committee over a over the, you know, future period would be about twelve thousand. So in total, it's fifty-three thousand.
So how much does this impact, like, other professional development opportunities in the district?
This is really, I I would say, I don't know if it's this is really a supplement to the professional development opportunities that we're doing across the district. And again, folk, starting out with the with the leadership. So this is this is new for the leadership team. In the past, we have had, you know, periodic equity, I guess, awareness training for the administrators and badco. But this is, this is more prolonged and extensive than what we've done in in prior years.
Is there a hiring goal at the end of this, that we're trying to create a more diverse staff? Like, it's, the focus is on a, is on training a pretty homogenous group of people, right?
Right, right, right. So we don't have a goal yet. You know, we have applied for, we did apply and receive a grant from DESI to begin workforce diversification. I think this year that that grant was about five thousand dollars, and it was available to help, you know, employees take the MTEL test, employees who were PARAs. You know, even our our PAR workforce, and I think Craig might have the percentage at the top of, are more accessible than I do. But our PARAs are more diverse, but I'm gonna guess that it's probably only maybe ten to fifteen percent diversity amongst our PAR ranks. You know, there is a, I think there is a challenge of lowering, you know, diverse workforce into education and and maybe smaller urbans. You know, diverse talent tends to flock towards the larger urbans. I know we've had some conversations with Pittsburgh State about their efforts, which are ongoing. And, you know, at the high school, they are looking at innovation pathway to help, you know, develop, start working on a pipeline to Pittsburgh State, becoming teachers. You know, but it but in reality, this is going to take, that's going to take many years. And I think, you know, with just our demographics, as as teachers, you know, begin retiring, many districts in the state are going to be challenged to find not only a diverse workforce, but a but a teacher workforce as, you know, teaching is not as attractive career choice for many students now. DESI has begun looking at the licensing requirements. And prior to the COVID nineteen crisis occurring, had formed, I think, a, I don't know if it was a task force, but they were certainly collecting input from superintendents on whether or not or how much either the testing requirements, especially passing the MTEL, how critical that was. The goal was not to water down the teacher. Uh, the goal was not to water down the teacher quality, uh, but the, um, standardized testing for MTEL. Um, you know, there is some bias in, in the test, uh, that does make it more challenging for, um, or the pass rates of, you know, diverse candidates is, uh, is materially lower than, um, than white candidates who, who take that test. I don't know if John, as you were at that meeting, uh, with the urban superintendents, if there's anything you want to add to that?
No, like Bob said, we started a lot of this work in the beginning of the school year, and we started looking at, um, our workforce. And, you know, um, we discovered what our numbers are. And, um, you know, our plan moving forward was to look at, you know, how we attract candidates to the district. Um, we were looking at going out and doing some recruiting at different colleges, um, during, uh, this time. Um, but unfortunately, um, we weren't able to go to some of these college fairs because a lot of it was canceled because of the, uh, COVID nineteen. So, um, you know, unfortunately, some of this work has paused. Um, but I, you know, when we regroup and are able to continue, uh, looking at diversifying our workforce, um, it's, it's something that we need to do in Pittsburgh. A lot of the research tells us that, um, students do better when they, um, have someone that looks like them teaching them. Um, so, um, you know, that's our goal. And like Bob said, it's going to be, um, not something that's gonna, you know, improve in a year, but it's gonna take some time. Um, so we need to start that work now. And we're gonna do that with, uh, Dig Deep.
I, I just have a comment, which is that, um, I've been going through my mother's papers. She was a teacher at Richardson Road School, first and second grade. It was a two-room schoolhouse in nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen fifty-eight. Um, I told the superintendent this story earlier, but I just wanted to say that in my mother's classroom, a number of the children were, um, Finnish because of the Richardson Road neighborhood. And these children did, were getting Ds their first, you know, quarter. And the Ds kind of climbed up to Cs. And because, you know, my mother was an ace teacher, as was her, you know, her compatriot, her partner Nancy Fitzgerald in the schoolroom, um, the kids were basically performing at like B, B-plus level. And I just wanted to say that this tradition of having teachers reflect the students is really old for Pittsburgh, really old. My mother grew up, Armenian was spoken in the home as much as English, really. I mean, she didn't speak Armenian because it was used as the secret language. But she became a teacher, and a lot of our Finnish population, some of the kids in my, in this classroom, uh, Jane Gersio was, uh, Jane Nudelag Gersio was a student. So, you know, we have, we have kids that became teachers who grew up as, you know, um, as, as the minority. And I have every faith we're gonna move forward on this. I'm really excited by the DEEP program. Um, it is more of what we've been doing. And I'm sure Mr. Stevens can speak to the diversity, um, that we have had, um, because he was a, he was a kid who came to Pittsburgh and, um, again, spoke English, but, you know, where you're working among kids. And the more kids we have who are excited about becoming teachers, um, the better. In my daughter Jet's class, there are girls, and I, I, I'm gonna say some boys too, um, who are excited about being interested in being teachers. And we have to capture that at any kind of a pipeline from the high school to the university. That, that's gold because that's how we always stocked our teachers, right, Mayor? I mean, the, the, the university to the Pittsburgh Public Schools. I mean, you know, your, your wife can attest that that's how it worked. And we will make this work. I think this is so important for, you know, for us to do and to be on top of it because we've already done it. I have the proof and boxes behind me. Um, so that's all I have to say. Um, thank you. Um, also, I'm wearing cat ears. Um, told the superintendent I would. Just to remind, it's like, we have pet therapy and we're figuring out a way to bring the pet therapy. So, um, I haven't lost my mind yet, but, um, I just wanted to bring that forward. We will do this because we have always done it. And I, I really thank the superintendent and all the admins and John and Adam and, you know, Rowan and Alicia and, and everyone I'm, I'm seeing here, um, and the mayor and Pete and all of you. Because it's so hard to do this school committee stuff. It's so hard to, you know, not be in the, not be in the classrooms and not be with you all. Absolutely. But I'm so proud of us right now. I really am. So thank you.
Sally, we didn't notice the ears. I don't know. Notice the ears at all. Because, uh, nothing surprises me about you. So I mean, I probably, I didn't even notice it. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It is.
Mr. Mayor, maybe, uh, superintendent, you could just kind of comment that this is, these are encumbered funds, correct?
Yeah.
These are, these will be encumbered funds from this year's budget. We, uh, you know, we did not need to utilize, um, some funding. We had put in, uh, funding for, uh, the use of another, uh, location this year, uh, in the event that if we had to rent some space, we didn't. So, uh, those funds, um, and some savings from, uh, resulting from the, uh, COVID crisis would be available for, for both proposals.
Just because we're talking about over a hundred thousand dollars of, of initiatives here, which I think are great and transformative. And we have the money to do it. But I think, you know, it, it's not, um, unimaginable that people in the next few months will be looking at very changed school budgets and realizing that, you know, we, I mean, the state's revenue is gonna be off, right? So I just think, I'd just like to be clear. I, I do support these initiatives, but, um, but I think it's important that people understand that this isn't, this isn't gonna take away from what we possibly could be doing next year because that's in a whole different ballpark.
Right, right. If there's no other, uh, comments, uh, I'll turn the budget items over to, uh, Mr. Schalfo, Director of Finance Operations. Take it away, Craig.
Thanks, Bob. Good evening, everyone. We have, uh, one donation to be accepted this evening. It's a wonderful gift of ten thousand dollars from the Pittsburgh Education Association in combination with some community supporters. Um, it'll be given to, in the form of four hundred twenty-five dollar market basket gift cards to be distributed, um, across the district by building principals and guidance staff for families in need. So thank you to the FBA for that wonderful donation. Uh, two grants to be submitted. We have a kaleidoscope cohort school funds grant, and that is for twenty-eight thousand dollars, and that will be submitted by Cell Street. And that is for, um, equitable and deeper learning and understanding of how to implement, uh, support for the deeper learning of all students. Um, we have a second grant to be, uh, submitted, and it's our CARES Act. We've been talking about this, um, for a few weeks. Um, we have, um, July first is the deadline for it to be submitted. Um, it is through the state grants since for two million dollars, and that is to support, uh, coronavirus, uh, relief in a number of different ways. We have some flexibility on how to utilize those funds. Um, and that'll be submitted by July first. Superintendent Joklar also asked me to do, uh, just a little FY twenty-one, uh, budget recap. And I had about a twenty-slide presentation for everyone this evening. I'm just kidding there. Um, unfortunately, they, each slide was pretty much the same. It had question mark after question mark after question mark. Um, so some of the things that we do know, um, is that the governor's foundation budget of eighty million dollars in, in, in the Student Opportunity Act is most likely behind us. Um, we also know that we, uh, the, the state will be proposing or putting out a House and Senate joint budget, um, hopefully at some point, uh, by July. Um, those, those, that's what literally do know. We don't know what the funding looks like, uh, locally. As many districts are, we're starting with a level funded budget from FY twenty. Um, and there's the talk of five percent cuts to ten percent cuts to fifteen percent cuts. But nobody really knows, um, what that is actually going to look like. Obviously, as, um, Gene just mentioned, you know, the state is still looking at what their revenues will look like over the course of the next several months before we have anything really concrete. Adding to complicate that a little bit is we don't really know what we're planning for come September. Um, we know that we'll be back in school in some form or fashion. Um, we don't know to what degree that will be remote, to what degree that will be in person. We can speculate that there will be potentially additional needs for nursing and healthcare across the district. Um, we can an- anticipate, um, that we may need additional maintenance staff. So there's lots of question marks around what September will look like. Uh, we know that we'll be social distancing, you know, even through transportation. So if we're bringing in half of our students in some form and they're being transported on buses, there'll be limits for social distancing, um, on, on buses. So, you know, planning for what our transportation budget will be. So there's lots of question marks. Um, unfortunately, we, there's not a lot of, um, information that people can really hang their hat on to do some really, um, critical planning. So there's lots of pieces to this. We're planning for scenario A, B, C, and D. And we'll be ready to kind of adapt and move depending on what the state provides us. Um, we are, again, we're looking at probably a one-twelfth budget scenario in July and August. And that looks as, um, we kind of move through the, uh, the month of April, May, and into June now. The one-twelfth budget looks like it could be a reality. So lots of question marks still on the FY twenty-one budget outlook.
You, you're, what you're saying is, uh, similar to what we're faced with on the city side. So we don't know what the numbers are gonna look like for local aid. Uh, and we're planning on several scenarios as well. And, um, you know, it's a, what I like to refer to as a cascading effect. I think the state is waiting for the feds.
Right.
We in turn are waiting for the state. So, uh, we're, uh, preparing, uh, for whatever eventualities. So, uh, but, um, you know, something that you'll be, uh, Calvin Brooks will be reaching out to you, the auditor, uh, for that you can ascribe to COVID nineteen and the cost associated. We're gonna submit that to the Division of Local Services. They're coordinating through the state. We met on a conference call last week. And, uh, what I'm asking people to do, department heads, along with school department, is load it up. Don't, don't sit and try to ponder, does that, is this gonna work? Is this gonna be considered COVID? Just put it down, let them figure it out, and because we don't want to miss anything. I get all we can. So.
Thank you. Absolutely. We'll be doing that.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. That wraps up the budget items, and I think we're on to the action items, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we, I think we took care of twelve ninety-five, ninety-six, and ninety-seven. Is that correct? Uh, no, I don't think ninety-seven, ninety, ninety-four, ninety-five, and ninety-six. We, we already voted on those, I believe, didn't we?
Yes.
Yes. So what, what is the pleasure of the committee? Would you like to bundle ninety-seven up through and including?
Bundle them.
Thirteen oh one. Motion? Which you made to bundle twenty, twelve ninety-seven up through and including thirteen oh one? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? It is unanimous. No need for executive session, Mr. Superintendent?
That is correct.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, so we'll adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Take care, be well, everybody.